Tim Fuller.
Here.
Tara Gilson.
Here.
Andy Mary.
Here.
Scott Gentsmann.
I'm here.
Jeannie Long.
Here.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Here.
James Stroh.
President.
Mike Boldig.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We'll move right along to the consent agenda, so we'll be looking for motion, please. Don't fight over it, people.
I move the board to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as presented slash amended minutes of the October 27, 2015 board meeting. The financial report for October 2015 and payment of bills and invoices through checks 5066 through 5217 and 151600375 through 151600544. And wire transfer amount of $10,293.93 in a total amount of $1,702,109.96.
Wait a second. Eddie? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Jensen, seconded by Mr. Mary. May discussion. Hearing that, roll call vote, please.
Tara Gilson.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Gentsmann.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
James Stroh.
Yes.
Tim Fuller.
Yes.
And Mike Boldig.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Before we get into item three, citizens delegations, Mr. Jensen.
Mr. President, I would ask for a brief moment of reflection for our former board member, John Crea, who passed away earlier this month.
If we don't, just please, in your own method, take a few moments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to item three, citizens and delegations, public comment, and we have three individuals signed up. The first will be, huh, is that local? Fab lab and facility.
In today's world of terrible stories and problems all over, I heard a piece out of New York State University. Pat, you'll really like this. Prosthetic arms and hands, forty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Kids don't get them because they grow a lot of them. There is a group, they're going under E and Nabel, letter E and then Nabel, and they are now 3D plastic printered hands and arms. Okay? So, perfect for the fab lab. So there's the future outfits together. Great story.
That's awesome.
Not what I was supposed to talk about. Facilities, okay. You guys got all the information you're ever gonna get from this public. So once you get your survey in, you know where you're at. Now it gets down to the real sticky wiki, trying to figure out what's gonna pass financially. You, as the board, are gonna have to get serious about, you have to micromanage this. When we look at the dollars that go into a building with the needs versus the wants versus the lows, you gotta break whatever option you're gonna go with down to this classroom takes this one, this takes this, this takes this, and you'll have to pick which things you think are the most valuable to the community if you're gonna meet a budget that's got a shot at passing. I know every one of you are serious about actually getting this through, and I know every one of you has the same feeling that I and everyone else has, what is the level of pain that would pass? So, the fear that I have is you're gonna run out of time because you have a deadline, I believe sometime in January, to actually come up with what this referendum means, and we have all these holidays and everything else, and only maybe a couple of weeks to actually get numbers and do this. No offense to administration or Bray or whoever else, square footage pricing is not gonna be the answer. You have to figure out which pieces you have to negate if this thing's gonna sell. And if you get to the deadline date and say, well, we're just gonna get the figures together, it's twenty-seven million dollars, and we're gonna put rooms on here and here, I think it's a recipe for failure. If she goes down the tubes this time, I don't see anything that'll happen for three, four, five years, and the kids in the community is the ones that are gonna pay for it. Don't get me wrong, I get all the trust in the world of faith, and you guys are closer to anybody's ever been to solving this issue. So, push ahead, micromanage it. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. And the thing you were talking about, the fab lab, I heard saw an article not that long ago where they were doing the prosthetics at a fraction. They, I think there was one young lady I was reading about who had a prosthetic hand made for three dollars and fifty cents, and the hospital to make one wanted thousands of dollars, so it works.
Thirty bucks for plastic hands and rights to make it. Cool.
Yeah. Pretty good. Okay, next up, Connie and Heidi, are you gonna do this, you wanna do it separately or you're doing it together?
Separately.
Separately? Okay, then Heidi, you're up.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm here to talk about the dance and cheer team for the Anago Red Robins, and I found out at one o'clock this afternoon that we were not on the agenda. I thought we were, and I was told this afternoon that somebody dropped the ball and all of a sudden we're not on the agenda. And I'm really disappointed and sad about that, so I guess I have my five minutes and Connie has her five minutes, but, you know, who are we hurting here? We're hurting the kids, the school spirit, and I don't understand what is so tough about this decision. Again, I'm not saying it's you guys, I'm just saying that whatever happened, it wasn't me who dropped the ball because three weeks ago I called and made sure that, well, Bobby wasn't there, so I left a message, and then I called a week later, we talked, and I was on the agenda, and now we're not on the agenda. But, I wanted to let you know, we did research, we had this all set for a presentation for tonight, and I can't go through all of this right now because my five minutes will be done, but I just wanted to let you know that we've had on here that it is our mission to uphold the pride and tradition of the Ingo High School Robins through unifying the student body, alumni, fans, and community. We will promote school spirit, motivate fan support, and provide inspiration and enthusiasm. And as dance and cheer advisors and coaches, we will strive to instill tradition, honor, commitment, and pride in our teams, school, community, and in each other. And I found this very interesting, research, in research, we found that from academic achievement to general happiness, there's a positive relationship to school spirit. Research has found students with a great deal of school spirit are more confident, are more likely to be leaders, are happier, are more active in their communities, and are more fulfilled. High school spirit is tied to high student achievement, achievement, and that says it right there. I just wanted to let you guys know, and everybody will be getting a little packet here so you can look it over, but anyway, funding, I know that's a big thing, you know, everybody's asking, oh my gosh, another thing, what kind of money are you looking for? Actually, we have done hours and hours of studying this, looking, talking to people, getting people, you know, what are their thoughts on it? Most everybody is totally interested. We've only hit a few roadblocks, but anyway, let's see here. We found out that we don't have monies at the moment, so what we would like to do is, I already went to the Ingo Grid Iron Club and also talked to Jason Bredegen of the Basketball Club, Center Court Club, and anyway, they are total in support with us and that they would help fund our trulee uniforms. So that's what we're looking at. Connie and I, we are, you know, saying that we would volunteer our time, so again, there is no cost. This is a win-win. I mean, why wouldn't you want something like this? So anyway, I really want you guys to look this over and such. We were really hoping for a vote, but obviously, us being in the five-minute thing, that's not going to happen. And anyway, so I just wanna get back to, I really don't understand why this is a tough decision. I also found out all of a sudden this afternoon that Dr. Childs, you had said that the administration team needs to be, has to look at this first.
Any proposals for program changes, co-curricular, otherwise need to come to the administrative team before they come to the board for anything.
Okay, before the board? But, the only thing is, we were never even told that, so we just assumed we were on the agenda and we're gonna talk to the board and, you know, go through this and such, so...
We have a meeting Wednesday, December 2nd, isn't it?
Management leadership team meeting?
Yes.
Yep.
And you would be welcome to bring it there and we can put it on you.
Anyway, so we did, we did everything. Everything is explained in here and such, if you could look at this and see, this is such a neat program that we could really start for the student body, the community, everybody. It just, it just is, I have to say, very disappointing that we thought that we were doing something different tonight. So anyway, I'll stop at this point. I guess the only other thing is that I just wanna leave you with is, I'd like an outline of a process for me, for the cheer and dance team to be alive and moving at the HS. I just, I guess I need an outline because Connie and I did everything that each administrative person told us to do, and we did a lot of jumping, and we met with Maron, Connie met with Tom Zamzow. We did everything we were told to do, and for some reason, I don't know why, it just seems that this is like a tough decision, so...
Don, would you respond to that?
Sure. I do know, because I spoke with Mr. Maron on the phone today, that this had come to his attention, and I told him at the time that we need to do what we do with all other things in that industry, we do it administratively. That's been the practice in the district for years, predating my arrival here. And, and he understood that, and indicated to me that he would communicate that back. I thought that was clear after the last meeting, that it needed to come to us, but in any event, we're perfectly willing to take a look at it at our very next meeting, and the administrative team feels that it's something that fits within the direction that we're moving, and it can work within the co-curricular program, we're certainly bringing a recommendation of the board. There is no reason, if the board chooses to approve it, that it can't be up and operating by the first of the year.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. So they are on the agenda for next month's?
I'll add them right now.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Connie?
I have the other half, Connie, so I have the other half of looking at uniforms being a place in uniform. I might be young, I still think I'm young, but I am super conservative. I don't want these girls, they're gonna be bouncing around, I want them covered. So my main thing was, I went to representatives, and I'll show you, like, I have two different uniforms that I like. They wear shells, there's, I mean, it's almost up to here, if they put their long sleeve underneath, which if they wear the shells for basketball, they really don't need their long sleeve. We have the long sleeve also that goes underneath the shell, which is almost a vittual neck. Their skirts, underneath their skirts is called a boy short, it's exactly what the volleyball girls wear. So actually, my cheerleader there, I guess she was gonna be even covered up more than volleyball girls because they'll have a skirt over it. A small will bring you at fourteen inches, and then if you go up to a medium, you're always at actually half an inch. So it's not like my girls are gonna be out there looking disrespectful. Our main thing is, we want Anago pride. They're not there just to cheer on the team, there is little girls looking at them, up to them as role models, and that's what I want. I want them to look good in their uniforms. So that was my main thing. That I'll give you things like this in quotes. We looked at different ones. Right now, we did quotes with two different companies. One of them, I'm looking at $122.54 per girl, the other one I'm looking at $130.50 per girl. That's gonna include their shell, it's gonna include their long sleeve underneath their shell, it's gonna include the skirt, the boy cut shorts, and a bow in their hair, and two pom poms. The only thing that the girls are gonna be required is their athletic feet, along with a small, low-rise white sock, and we're asking them to purchase on their own a white-on-white shoe, so I want the white sole, and I want the white shoe, and it has to have some support. I don't want like the little kids or nothing like that with the girls, so I don't want them getting hurt. So it's about safety about that. My other thing that I was really concerned about is, I'm a business owner. Everything is standard operating procedures all over, I have them all over my farm. When it came to this, it really, I was like, what am I dealing with here? There was no standard operating procedure. I called Mike after we came to the last meeting, said, "Mike, where do I go from here? Can you tell me my stuff?" Because I'm very unsure. So he did. So I did talk to Tom, and Tom said, "You need to go, talk to Ben Sprecher, ask for, because you guys aren't even, you didn't even, like, wanna do, like, a reinstatement of the cheer team, write down your names, your address, and everything." So I went to her, and that's been three weeks ago, and she said she couldn't find it in the computer, and there was different software that was updated, so that was understandable. So I said, "Well, can I see you in a week from now because I'm dropping my daughter back off next Sunday?" And she's like, "Oh, yes." Well, then when I went there, she said, "I still cannot find anything of what, how I can reinstated, or for you guys want to be a club and getting a club started." So I said, "Would you like me to go to the district?" And she said, "No, no, I'll figure it out." Well, you should really have standard operating procedure for something like that, it shouldn't take three weeks, and still to this day I've not received an email or anything in the mail. So that was kinda like, what's going on? What am I dealing with? But we did get a meeting with Mr. Maron, and he was preparing us for this, saying, you know, get your coats, find out uniforms, make sure you're prepared for this, have your mission statement outlined. So that's what we did. We did in the first week of November, when I talked to Mr. Boldig, called Heidi and said, "Make sure you get us on the agenda." She did. And she called, she said, "I left a message." She said, "Next week I'll call." So she did, and she called me back and said, "Hey, we're on the agenda." Perfect. Because I have girls that, my daughter is in this high school, she's not planning to do cheerleading, which is sad to me, but that's, she's gone the other option of doing the play. But she's got friends that are looking into this, and they're like, "Went to Florida Tuesday." They're all excited, and I feel horrible that I'm gonna have to go home and say, "Sorry, Maron, the agenda's waiting to have a vote again." But the worst part of this is with these uniforms, they haven't been stocked for the girls, but they don't have the Robins or anything album on it. That's gonna take three weeks to get this going. So the longer we keep waiting, I mean, we might not even be into basketball. So I'm not sure why we really have to come to the board, because cheerleading was one on in Anago High School, so I just don't understand why we can't just reinstate it, why we have to jump through hoops.
That's a good question. Was it ever formally disbanded, or I mean, is it actually still technically a club? Does anyone know that?
It's part of a budget cut, I understand, some years ago, and Mr. Maron has probably had in the time since eight or ten different proposals brought to him for activities, some reinstated, some new ones, and posture of the district has been quite along, until financial resources improve, the board has pretty much put those things on hold. Of course, we're aware of the fact that we had a group that wants a crap shooting team as well, and they've been invited to address the board as well, but we weren't able to come. So, Mr. Maron has an extensive list of these things, and the practice has always been that these things are vetted with the administration before they come to the board.
I don't know what my correct move is here, but I represent that trap. We're waiting for the situation, standard operating procedures to get it touched.
I'll do a presentation to the board and...
We tried that once before, we were, we had on three nights, so we didn't...
You were invited to be here, not so...
So what happens if we go to the administrative, do we even have to come to you if they approve it?
Well, it'll be the administrative team.
Yeah, but I'm saying, saying, if we present it to the administrative team and they approve it, then does it, then it comes to the board and that's...
It will come to the board for a formal, yes, for a formal vote.
Could you put the trap on the next meeting, too?
We're gonna, we're gonna wait our...
Okay, okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
We're gonna wait.
So when we come to the administrative board, I mean, I still don't have any paperwork yet to sign or anything, does that have to be done before we come, and so where do we get the...
What you presented to the board is what you need to present to the administrative team, and that's all you need to do. There'll be questions, of course, they'll want answers, but it should take more than about fifteen minutes of your time.
I'm just handing out the prices that we looked at.
So quick question, Don. If the administrative team forwards it to the board, is that just a line item in next month's agenda, or do you guys have to re-present anything?
I don't know, they won't need to present it. They will present a presentation.
I just had that passing down this way, pass it down. These are the two uniforms that we are actually looking at, not just...
And my thought process also is, is this is something that we could potentially address at the committee of the whole meeting, which meets before the monthly board meeting. We, committee of the whole will be meeting middle of next month, so...
The committee of the whole is actually on the eighth?
Well, on the eighth, excuse me.
On seven earlier.
So we could potentially have something for you then? Would that be...
Am I correct, though, that, because I, my understanding was that you would get, you're not asking us for money, though, at this point?
No.
Okay. That I'm sure would help, like, the administration.
Yeah, we're asking for this year, no money for the outfits. The outfits, we want it to still be under property of Anago High School, so when the girls retire, the uniforms stays.
The uniforms stay here.
So that'll be perfect, and then we can keep reusing them, and when I did look at these uniforms, they were the classic uniforms, so if in three years from now, we have a new girl that is a different size that doesn't fit into it, this company will still have that uniform for us, so we can keep reusing the uniforms over and over again in the...
And just to make sure, Connie, that I remember our conversation, you did indicate that you did come here to look to see if you could find some existing uniforms, and there weren't any.
Yes, Mr. Maron did let us go into the upstairs storage unit. The only thing that we could find are tops, and there was, I think there was sixteen tops, but they look like they were probably from like the 1980s, so I don't know.
I can style them.
Yeah.
I like the 80s.
80s? This is a little bit tricky for a little... Well, good, thank you, Connie. Yep. So then, we will make sure they are on the administrative meeting for the second. Brian, you've already got them there, and then potentially we can discuss this against the whole meeting on the eighth. Good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Brian Brennan, since we jumped past you guys, what's happening?
Not much. Catapultry was, yeah, people really liked it, we raised a lot of money for it. Student council really appreciated not only the school's help, but the district's help, just because we did a lot of things outside of school as well. The sports are coming up. If you guys are getting out to the schools, just reminding teachers, faculty members, sports are coming up, and community participation is awesome. Right now, there's a cool basketball game. There's also a hockey game going on, so lots of stuff coming up.
Thank you, all covered here.
Hockey game tonight, as a matter of fact.
Did they choose the play?
Yes, we are doing Bye Bye Birdie. We are having open balls right now, and then auditions are gonna be right in the middle of December, and so that's gonna be fun coming up as well.
I was in that, so we're all gonna come and joke you guys and talk about how many we...
As long as I'm not saying it inside the public. Common courtesy, turn off your cell phones.
We'll talk amongst ourselves.
As long as I can hear you and say up to you.
Anything else going on?
One thing is that the new bus, the new busing system where they're coming in, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, but it seems to be working out really well, within the morning, coming in through the back doors, students coming in, works a lot better. Any other questions?
Guys, got any questions for me? Nope, enjoy your Thanksgiving break.
Plan to.
All right, thanks, guys. All right, we'll move on to item four, new business policy committee report. Mr. Fuller?
A meeting for the policy committee was held November 10th at the High School I M C. It was called order to 702 by myself, committee members present, myself, Jeannie Long, Andy Mary, and Tara Gilson, other board member present, Mike Boldig, administrator present, Don Childs, Tim Prunti, and Brian Missval. There were no public comments. Pardon me on this, I hope I get the name right, are Mike Weirdo?
Birdio.
Birdio?
Birdio.
Okay. Presented the committee with a pack of information on the school forest and various items detailing hunting permission on district lands. The subject has become a concern in the past month, as hunters have been seen on the school forest and with students frequently visit, school field trips. Dr. Childs will be checking with legal counsel and policy details, and Tim Prunti will follow up with the insurer's requirement. And the information was coming to the board tonight for review and discussion.
You documented forest off J?
Heard you.
Which, the noble and like?
Yeah.
The noble and like?
Yeah.
I've never seen anybody up there.
So, we're talking about to set it up to give permission, or they'll have to contact.
Yeah, and we communicated with the legal counsel, and basically, they're advising. The problem, the problem we have is that the school forest lies smack in the middle of, is surrounded by county lands, and there is no clear demarcation of what is what, but their advice is that we mark it as best we can and post it, no hunting except by permit with indications of how to go about getting that permit, and then having some posting that bans people from entering on days when children are present on the school forest, even if for educational purposes. What complicated it was the fact that there is a snowmobile trail there that goes through there, and we wanna use that, and our insurer indicated that that shouldn't be a big problem, but subsequently, a group of four-wheeler club apparently has asked to make use of that snowmobile trail in other times of the year, and that has some issues around it, so we're waiting for final word from our errors and omissions insurance company regarding potential liabilities and the best way to mark that land, and then I think we'll be prepared to present a draft to the committee with a comprehensive policy.
Other questions on that, then? Okay, and then on the committee, we forwarded the following policies for the first reading, the first one, policy 811.1, parent involvement. On that one. Okay, we got that for the first reading. The second, second one for the first reading is policy 458, school wellness.
Note that it has two aspects to it, and it reflects changes in federal law and regulatory practices. And one of them has to do with physical activity, and the other has to do with nutrition, and later in the agenda, Terry Hilger is here to talk a little bit about the service report. I think she can assure you what the district has done in regard to nutrition, so...
Yeah, it's for first reading, then? Then next one is 342.1 for first reading, child fight activities.
That's special education, and there have been some changes in federal law, and that with reauthorization of IDDA, so we have...
Last one for first reading is 443.6, dangerous weapons firearm possession.
And that will obviously get tied to the hunting permission on school, school property.
Well, there are some other issues with that, and I was looking for that, and I
Well, there's some other issues with that, and I was looking for that, and I got it months, a month ago. I haven't been able to go through it again, but, um, it covered areas of, such as, uh, transporting students in private vehicles for, uh, school activities.
Yes.
And, uh, I was, would like to have some discussion on that, maybe not this time, but I think I'll bring it up at the policy meeting, and we can discuss some more at the next meeting about, uh, people with concealed carry permits, military training, and other things would, should be, uh, probably exempted from that, in my opinion, you know, it's just, I'm gonna bring up for discussion.
Well, I think there's some state statutory language on that now, that has exempted retired police personnel and the off-duty police personnel from prohibition. In other words, they can carry concealed weapons on school grounds if they meet those. And we're gonna have to rewrite the policy to be compliant with, with the new state statute.
Which you're correct, Jim, that bringing it up at the next policy meeting for discussion there would be appropriate.
I, we don't have the firearms policy on. Maybe I...
No, it's not on yet.
Oh.
It was, it was under discussion, but it was because it, um, was directed to the attorneys because of the liability issues and stuff, but it wasn't brought forward at this time. Other questions on that, then? We'll play it back, and then we'll discuss more at the next policy meeting. Okay, and then we forwarded policies for the second reading, policy one eighty-seven, public participation at board meetings.
Good.
Pretty simple, just plain.
Right. Okay, but a second, that's for the second reading on that. Then the other one is for policy three thirty-three, parents' rights and district programs, activities, student privacy. On that one, for second reading. Roll.
Yeah.
Okay, then I move the board, adopt revised policy one eighty-seven, public participation at board meetings, and three thirty-three, including rule three thirty-three, parents' rights in relation to district programs, activities, and student privacy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Fuller, second from Ms. Mary. Any discussion? Jayden and Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jansma?
Yes.
Jeannie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Lee?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Kessler?
Yes.
Mike Bolding?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, then, then the next policy meeting will be on Tuesday, December eighth, at seven P M. at the IMC. The meeting was adjourned, you know, at seven, seven thirty-five P M. Very good. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to four B, Community Relations Communications Committee. Jim?
Well, we had a meeting of the Community Relations and Communications Committee meeting this held November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at the Toon Elementary School in Toon. Our meeting was called order at six thirty-five by myself. Committee members present, Patrick McKenna, Jessica Lee, Scott Jansma, other board members present, Mike Bolding, Tim Fuller, and Andy Mary. Administrators present, Don Childs, District Administrator, Tim Prunty, Director of Business Services, Jake Ledman, Supercharger Buildings and Grounds, and Nancy Resch, the elementary principal. And there were a number of other committee members, uh, present, uh, and they had quite a lively discussion, uh, about the different facilities and, uh, um, concepts and reasons and, uh, I guess, uh, methods that we came to our conclusions, things like that that they questioned. So, Fennel, we asked the committee why the board had decided to move fifth grade to middle school. Doctor McKenna and Doctor Childs explained the reasons for this decision, the decision that sets us collaboration teachers and educational benefits for the students. Kate Kilchelsky asked how the board narrowed the options, done three options since the last public forum. And Doctor Childs explained the process elimination of concepts. Further discussion following regard, following regarding the facilities planning and the clarification of facilities questions and operational question on the survey. Tim Prunty explains how the district receives revenue from the state, and in fact, due to declining enrollment, and the discussion of possibly the charter school building structures, attendance, vouchers, and K twelve bussing were also discussed. And our committee members and non-committee board members reported on community linkages. Doctor McKenna met with Don Sodowsky, who represents the FAB with that project, told them more about the program, and Andy was committed to participate. Jessica Lee shared that she recently toured the middle school. And I got it incorrect here, it's, uh, Scott Jansma, it says he was, Scott Jansma attended Doctor Childs' facility's presentation at Crestwood. These attended the one at Pleasant View, and I attended the one at Crestwood.
Thank you.
So, here, PBIS committee report, Nancy Resch gave the report on the activities of the PBIS committee. The major goal of the committee is to distribute the handbook on elementary, major, and minor behaviors, and this handbook will ensure that minor and major behavior is handled consistently district-wide. PBIS is also participating in the Chamber Community Parade on December second, formerly known as the Christmas Parade, and Ms. Resch also spoke about various surveys being conducted amongst stands. And our next committee meeting will be December sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty P M. at North Elementary School in Antigo, and the meeting was adjourned by Nene's cassette at eight thirty P M.
North Elementary, well, the elementary Christmas time, that is.
That day?
Sixteenth.
Really?
Yeah.
What's on anybody think what I said?
That's during the day, though, meaning, is it?
That's evening.
It's during the day.
It's during the day.
Is it during the day?
Yeah. Usually nine and one.
Nine to one?
Nine.
Nine and one.
And one. Got it.
Also, Jim, uh, it was Kate Keelman, K I E L M A N, not Kilchelsky.
Yeah, but Keel.
Kilman, Kilchelsky. Pedro, Patato.
Any questions or comments on Jim's report?
What did people think about the charter school idea?
Well, when things calm down enough.
I mean, by lively, were there, were people kinda angry? I mean, was that kinda how it were? We told them Scott wanted appropriate...
Scott did not say that.
Scott caught a major ration of crap the whole day.
Yeah. You know, they, they weren't, did you feel they were closed, that idea?
Uh, I thought, other than the Winnebago, that no, nobody seemed too open to any idea other than what they have there.
I didn't really, well, I didn't know that they weren't open to it. I thought they were kinda like, maybe kinda blindsided by it. They didn't know what to make of it.
Maybe blindsided, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't really know what to make of it.
You know, we, we did, did some explaining and, you know, the ins and outs of a charter school, and I, but I, I agree with, with, uh, Tim. I don't think it was e-fline.
Tim, did you think there, people were open to any of that stuff, like, uh, innovative school idea?
No. That's why, that's why you don't respond to that was real quick. No one else really responded to it.
Well, that's why I put it out there to see if anybody was open.
Right, right, but that's why, that's why no one else responded, because it's not, they're not open. I'll, I'll tell you, from the people, they're not open.
They wanted the way it is.
Yeah, they wanted, they don't want nothing to do with the charter school or innovative school.
There was a gentleman kind to the side over by Nancy who said, "Oh, that's how it was when I was in school." I mean, you know.
Yeah, you did.
I mean, he, that was...
Inquiring.
He, he said there were two grades together, yeah.
Yeah, and talking about kind of innovative school ideas. I mean, I think, it's such an abstract thing, it's like, what does that even mean?
Right, exactly.
It's change.
Kind, kind of the impression that I got when I was there, though, is, there was a lot of, what I thought, people were maybe misinformed about things, because when I, when we wandered in there, it was under the impression that this building's gonna be closed, that's gonna be empty, pretty empty. And that was not the, the intent.
But, you know, I think, I think there, some people, I don't wanna speak for everybody, are under that impression, and they just have it in their mind. I've talked to people several times, and I was like, I mean, even through PTO, it was like, "Well, should we get basketball uniforms today once? 'Cause they're probably gonna close our school next year." And I'm like, "What? Okay." But, you know, so I'm telling them what's going on, and still, they still came to that meeting, and they were like, "You're gonna close the school?" And I'm like, "Okay, you guys are not listening."
It's the nature of the...
And I think a lot of it is, it's not, it's not just there. I think a lot of it, we're gonna present, there's a lot of confusion. Unfortunately, I think there's some confusion out there, with a lot of the public, you know, not just happened to them at other schools, too. There's some confusion on what exactly, 'cause, you know, we, what, what's exactly going on? People don't understand it completely right now. There's a lot of confusion out there.
And like you said, when we were walking in, Tim, there's a lot of leftover baggage on previous, you know, on runners.
And we're working through that.
Yeah, we're trying. I thought, at the end of the night, I thought it went well. We did throw a wheeler out there about K twelve bussing. That was icy. So, um, but people are scared. I mean, we just have to...
Change, what? What's that?
Change is difficult, 'cause it means uncertainty about where people's lives will be, you know, like, if kids are somewhere else, and what's going on. It's, it's really significant.
Okay.
It's difficult. Just for the record, too, it looks like in the Antigo community event calendar, it lists as the Antigo Christmas Parade, just so that people, we haven't changed that. I don't think it's...
Sorry. There's just one more comment. I, I, I talk about the splitting the second, or, I mean, the, the grades up. Um, me and Tim were in school about forty-eight, seven years longer in Toon. Um, they actually split the third grade and left part of the third grade with the second grade, 'cause they were a little slower, and then moved with the other part of the third grade with the fourth graders, uh, so...
It was partially numbers, 'cause there was too many, and so they had, like, a second and third, and a third and fourth together.
Just to even balance out the...
To balance out the stuff, then.
Well, there's plenty of kids there.
Because there was, and that was partly too, remember, 'cause there was certain teachers, and you were glad it got one without another.
That's true. That is the past, and we can't worry about that enough.
It was numbers, basically, when, 'cause there wasn't as many students.
But it was something they did, it was, I remember the teachers talking about it. The reason I remember is that, at the end of the year, I remember two teachers talking about it when it came back to school, it was just like they said they were gonna do it, and they had, they had split it, and they, they decided to do that, so it was something they did. Anyway, uh, that's it for me, then.
Okay, Don, you had something?
I, I was just gonna say, I think that there was a little bit of a change. People were suspicious when we talked about an innovation school, but when we talked about ungraded primary or multi-age grading, there was a kind of a hole, and then it was a little...
Okay, good. That's right. Okay. Well, thank you, Jim, for your report. Appreciate it. Um, we will go on to item five, staff reports. Mrs. Hilger, you're up.
Hi, everybody. Here we have I Stacey. I got a pretty big mouth. What you have in front of you is a school nutrition report that I prepared that covers everything from who we are feeding to what I am feeding them, to the hot topic of interest right now, which means community eligibility provision, which means feeding all students in high-poverty schools at no meal chart. So, I'm just gonna give you the kind of summary for the period. The pie chart shows you that forty-four percent of the students in the Antigo school district receive free meal benefits. Eight percent receive reduced meal benefits, in other words, a reduced chart, graph is that thirty cents, one hundred forty cents. And forty-eight percent of the students in the district are full-paid students. Of interest, when we get on to talking about community eligibility provision, is seven-eighths of the students that are eligible for free meals are identified students, in other words, are directly certified. They receive free meal benefits without turning in any payment or application to school refreshment. How do we compare to the state? Okay, in twenty thirteen, fourteen, there's data out there on what the state did as far as participation for breakfast and lunch. For breakfast in twenty thirteen, fourteen school year, eighteen percent of the students ate breakfast compared to the state average of twenty percent. For lunch, we had a rate of seventy percent participation, the statewide average was sixty-two. This year, we are starting feeding twenty-six percent of the students breakfast, big jump from last year. Reason being, I've implemented universal free breakfast at the middle school, and then the principal request, we started that at North Elementary. What universal free breakfast is, is breakfast is at no charge to any students regardless of their employment status. Generally, it works well in schools that are at least sixty percent eligible. So, North is, is kind of an over here, but I wanted to start it in those groups, so often see middle school students getting upset, like, and, and, and they're jumping and they like, and they often skip breakfast. So, I chose to kind of give a rest instead of doing this, 'cause I'm wonderful at this because participation has nearly doubled at this school. Um, North, even though that's a high-need school, a high-poverty school, we've only seen about twenty-five more students taking advantage of that. When you really think about it, probably the reason being is middle school students can lock themselves to school, so they can get there, they can be, get their responsibility, get there for breakfast. Um, students at North are, are, are parents are responsible for getting students there. So, we've done some advertising. I think it may talk about more, um, hopefully in the winter months, but right now, all students are letting in, and they pay for breakfast, but still, there's only about twenty-five more students eating breakfast every morning. What do I put on the menus? A lot of people say, "Why do you feed them lunch to be okay?" Things that I look at are, what does the tray look like? What fits on a five-partner tray? What do people like to eat in this area? Everybody knows people in Antigo like potatoes, food in Wisconsin, like potatoes, rice is not as popular, okay? I also utilize US-made foods to keep our meal house down. Ninety-five percent of our entries are probably US-made foods. What do we feed the students so that we can get them through the lunch lines relatively quickly, as much as everybody wants students to have a decent lunch, and teachers want them, um, to get through the lunch lines as quickly as they can, because if they have no time, it's made out for recess.
Terry? Oh, you refer to US-made foods, that's Department of Agriculture?
It is, that's what we now, we're not supposed to call commodity, it's commodities, and we're not supposed to call it US-made foods. So, yeah, those are the foods that we definitely come on, we know about. I also have to follow a very strict meal pattern, because we are part of the federal school lunch and breakfast program. So, um, we do not have a software to analyze our menus. The state comes in and does an analysis for our menus every three years, and how we, we are fine with that. Basically, I follow the menu plan so that I, I meet the needs. I'm not overfeeding, I'm not underfeeding, we're in a calorie range. Those calorie ranges are dependent upon their age groups. A lot of big changes, and there's been a lot of being intentional that, we have to have certain vegetables, vegetables have their own supplements, we have to get these beans, and duck wings, and red oranges, and whole grains. Some of those things are turned out to students, some, some of them haven't, haven't been too bad. I think in the long run, we've been able to work with them, but it is a little bit tough. We do see, uh, some foods, these students are now required to have a fruit or vegetable on the tray. Not a bad thing, but they are required to have that. On the local wellness policy, the school, all school districts have been required to have a local wellness policy since two thousand and five, but we have one in Antigo that on menus recently. We've passed the policy into a specific language, which specifies nutrition standards, um, physical activity, how we're gonna, um, we have set physical activity and nutrition goals, how we're gonna market, how we're gonna implement, and how we're gonna monitor it. For the first time since two thousand and five, I feel that wellness, uh, community is much more active. We've met a few times, we're setting specific goals. We've now got representative from all buildings. We've got a long ways to go, and we've got to recall a long way. Do not mistake the school wellness policy for the Smart Snack Guidelines, which was a federal rule that school districts who participate in the national school lunch and breakfast programs had to implement until July of two thousand and fifteen. What the Smart Snack Guidelines are, is it restricts schools, not just what I sell all card, but it restricts the sale of foods, uh, to students, um, during the school day. The school day is defined as a minute after midnight until a half an hour after the bell rings, okay? Schools have, uh, foods have to be run to a specific nutrition calculator to make sure that they're not loaded with sugar, not loaded with fat, not loaded with sodium, not loaded with calcium. Smart Snack Guidelines are not a bad thing. Uh, school districts tend to see more students in their lunch lines with the Smart Snack Guidelines, and that's what we really want. We do want students eating healthy lunch, rather than, um, buying ice cream candy bars, and that's, was never really happening anyways, because groups and organizations were very respectful and not selling things during lunch, but, um, it does have a little bit of financial impact... impact on some programs because they're not allowed to sell things during the school day, nor am I, but it's not a bad thing. So don't mix the Smart Snack rules with the school wellness program. A school wellness policy is developed to guide you in developing a healthy school environment. We want that. Community eligibility provision, that is something that came with the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. Community eligibility provision is a void commitment that schools can intervention to eat all students at high poverty schools meals at no charge, okay? There's benefits to community eligibility provision. Obviously, the biggest benefit is what it can do to the family household, that you obviously retain also inside no charge. It does decrease the paperwork in the school nutrition office. You do not have to verify, you don't have to do applications, you know, you have to put money in the school nutrition office, you can just use a paper and council check off and you're just claiming by the number of meals that you serve and not by status, okay? So it sounds like a wonderful thing, however, people, and I'm sure you know that there's many other programs in the district that are financially dependent on the data, the lunch applications that are available. So that's a big consideration before the, if you ever want to jump ahead and say let's do community eligibility provision. I did include in your packet or information that I provided you with, the state has online the tools to determine whether your school would be one that would be considered to be a community eligibility provisioned school. If you look at the first one, I did it for the district and the first thing I had to do, and we have to use April data, so I used April's data for last year. I entered in the number of identified students. And what they mean by identified students is those students that are automatically eligible for meal benefits without the use of paper application. These students are directly certified because they're homeless, they're runaway, they are receiving food stamps in the household, okay? In order for a school to be eligible to be a community eligibility school, okay, they have to be forty percent. So when I did it for the district, notice that was thirty-three percent. So as a district, we would not be eligible as a district to pay households at no meal charge, at no charge. I put a stop there, but I went through the whole process to just show you to what it would look like. Next, I took a look at North Elementary, okay? North Elementary, as we know, has a high high poverty rate, a lot of students are free meals, okay? They come out to sixty-one percent, sixty percent identified students, okay? And you go down to the bottom right of that document and says, it tells me that if we implement community eligibility of the district work, that financially we'd be okay, I'd be ahead in the school nutrition program, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, okay? So, community eligibility provision would be an option for North Elementary, financially be okay, it's something that could be considered. And then I also took that Mattoon, because we often think of Mattoon as being a high need school, and you can see that Mattoon would be eligible because it has forty-one point eight percent of identified students. However, the magic number really for that number of identified students is should be at least like sixty-one or sixty-two percent, because then you take that by the state's law, which is very complicated, of one point six to determine how many meals that's a minimum for at the free rate. So you can see even on Mattoon, just algebra, it's forty percent, forty-one percent were in the red financially, you really would not be successful if you do that. Now, last page, you do not have to apply for a school alone, in other words, I could combine any school that I want. And when Mary Jo was here, she said, take a look and combine East, North and West. So then when I combined East, North and West, there's many scenarios of schools you can combine, I did play with it like you would a puzzle and tried to combine all schools to see if there was a way that we could do this to, why there's always one school at North Elementary, at least one school. So, but once again, you can see we're going to be feasible if we combine, say, East, North and West. One thing though, that we really want to keep in mind is we want to make sure that we're able to get the financial information to help support the other program. I've tended to, most schools that have done this, say that that is possible, at least which means a real simple registration process, but it's almost mandatory for parents to fill out the required forms. There are two forms put out by the state. One is very slick and very simple, basically a household is checking what they're incoming, are they sealed over, they could be six thousand, fifty thousand. So they're not really giving you specific information about your household, and especially a lot of people do not want to provide that information.
Good.
I just have one question, okay? The only reason it's an issue is I, when I was down there, I have to be at Mattoon with this immaterial afterwards, and the milk, okay, when it says low-fat milk, okay, he dumped, a lot of milk is getting dumped out of it. Because now there's low-fat, does that mean it has to be the one percent in skim or like two percent? Because I'm saying, a lot of these kids don't like that one percent in skim and they're dumping, you know what I mean, they're dumping half, three quarters of it going down the drain.
Unfortunately, it does.
It does have to be one percent in skim.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, a lot of kids, I just noticed that, you know, at the end of the day, that a lot of the kids at home, they have two percent or whatever, and they give them the skim milk, they don't like it.
Yeah.
And they're dumping most of it out.
I know. And you were standing there, standing there, you could consider one percent in schools as a dietitian, yes, I would, because we're better off to have them here soon, that the house will invite you, but it is, it is a low-fat law.
Okay, I was just asking, this is the one, I just wanted to know, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments?
You both say?
I was wondering about the commodities. You said you bought, you purchase up to ninety-five percent of your food through the US?
I would say about ninety-five percent of our main entries are the US-made foods.
Okay, and is there a minimum? Are you required to purchase from them or is that just...
They give us X amount per student per year, so it equates to about seventy-five thousand dollars that I have to spend to purchase food. And I can choose how I spend, what I spend that on. They sometimes cap who's like, probably that might have that category, who's in my group, so I choose that.
Okay.
Some of the foods I do choose on, because I don't like, it's a much more flexible than it used to be where they just gave us the food. Now we can actually, I always have videos and I should make it happen.
Okay.
Terry, how many students are just around the Astoria, doing a free breakfast at the middle school?
At the middle school, it's about two hundred and eight. It was one hundred, so it's double at the middle school.
Who else?
No. I just have a question to you. What do you do with leftovers? This is my son, talk to the van counselor up here, and because he's in charge of the milk, tells me you're just going to have to pay, and he had said that it's going to expire soon, so he went up to Miss Levick and said, you can get rid of this, you know? And she's like, oh, most definitely. And on her desk, she always has a box of cookies. And she said there, she knows so many students, they come into her office just to say, hey, Miss Levick, and that's your cue as, she'll say, cookie, and that's, she knows that's going to be their supper, that they'll put it in their backpack or something. Do you have leftovers that you can... Kids know that, that they can just grab at the ones that know that they don't have somewhere in here?
We can't do it yet, we can't say from using, because of policies that we have, we cannot , we're not even allowed to do that from a private setting, like in the city's standpoint. However, something that, you know, we may want to consider push towards is breakfast in the classroom, okay? Often, school districts or offices are restricted by crisis and breakfast in the classroom because so many items that could happen, okay? But what we're telling students to, we're telling students at the middle school, if you don't want this, because we have grabbing areas at the middle school, which really bind it, take it, because at home, you might want something at the school.
You're right.
Kids are...
Are you involved with the after-school activity? I just write this a little bit of it, and I was like, especially tying into agricultural trees, Samantha and Jeffrey really involved with that a lot this year. And it's amazing as a parent, you know, I knew, moving from the Black Valley right here, that yes, Langley County is very poor county, but I could not imagine that, yeah, that five out of twenty-five students, they said in an English class, everybody has English, five of them will not have supper, whatever they eat at school, yeah.
And we do find on Monday mornings, kids come in from school, it's really...
Well, Terry, thank you for...
Thanks, sir.
...your report and thank you for answering all the extra questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll jump on item five B, school report, Spring Valley. Mr. Newfeld?
You know, when I got this email, I just happened to be at my computer and I agreed to it and I'll set the standard law, except for my law. Well, my name is Jeff Newfeld, I'm from Spring Valley. Just to start off, Spring Valley has gone through many, many changes. Number one, they've got, just this year, they've got a new principal, they've got four new teachers, they've got a new librarian, new art teacher, new counselor. We've got music teachers that actually split, so we will have one music teacher one day and a second music teacher on another day. We've also got a long-term sub, we had a long-term sub in grade two due to a health issue. And to let you know that we just had two more students in Rome today, which brings our Roman up to a hundred and ten, and discussing more roughly at about seventy-nine percent free and reduced. So that is a huge change out at Spring Valley over the years. They've had a tight-knit teaching crew. I know the fifth grade teacher the last couple of years has been back and forth, back and forth, but a tight-knit group. And they have two retirements, but the new teachers right now, out of the four, we've got a retired teacher coming back, Title One is back at Spring Valley after many years of absence. A retired teacher was willing to come back. We've got a first grade teacher, an internal movement from Mattoon, she's doing wonderful, she's fitting right in, and a brand-new teacher in fifth grade who puts a lot of time and effort into what he's doing right now. He's got two kids in middle school and high school, commutes from Merrill, but he's doing a wonderful job. Currently, verdict's still out on our kindergarten teacher, we'll see how he does. Unfortunately, I don't have any real wow stories about what's going on out at Spring Valley in the instructional area. I was warned about this, I experienced Spring Valley's annual Halloween party. I dressed my family up, I'm not a Halloween person, dressed the family up, even my wife got dressed up, she's a counselor out there. When we came through that door, my two and my three-year-old grabbed onto me and they held onto me for the rest of the day. There were people stacked in the entrance area. And once we finally worked our way to the gym, I tell you, there must have been a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five people out there. And this was all put on by parents in the PTO, the teachers had no responsibility. There was a complaint over the last couple of years about sugar. Well, you know, what it is, Halloween, I'm sure that your kid gets pumped up on sugar at eight o'clock at night. So what they did, they had more fruit than, it was amazing, they had more food that they could have fed the families, I feel bad. But just to see that, that was my first experience with the parents who got in the school day, granted it was at school, and it was just really neat to see that the support that was there. You know, I would say it was probably about eighty percent show of students. We even had kids who had graduated from Spring Valley, came back because it's so much fun. People even talked about trying to make this a community event, and I just kind of shook my head, well, we couldn't do it at Spring Valley. But just to see the cohesiveness in the community of the parents and the families out there, it was really neat. It was really neat. Other things that we've done so far, we had the Ned Show come, it just so happened, somebody called, there was a cancellation in Menominee, Michigan, and I don't know how they got Spring Valley's number, they called me. And what it is, it's a character education presentation put on by, put on by a gentleman and a cartoon character named Ned, and it's all done with yo-yos. And the Ned is an acronym for Never Give Up, Encourage Others and Do Your Best. They did tie it into PBIS, which was really neat, that they had the opportunity for it. And how we paid for it, it was a pay forward. So after the performance, for a week, we sold the yo-yos that were there. So we didn't need to sell a minimum or maximum or anything like that. However, you know what, I guess I really wasn't thinking about how many yo-yos would be sold and the problems that it would cause. But the kids were very respected, we had a little area on the playground with the kids to play with their yo-yos, no black guys, no bumps on the head. I know bus drivers are still resent, resentful. But it was, it was, it was really neat. The kids were in awe for an hour and fifteen minutes, even my fourteen kindergartners just sat there. It was, it was really neat and I would recommend it to anybody in this district, especially elementary. I do have that information. We've also been promoting the Hundred, Hundred, Hundred Mile Club. We've had visits, we've had, I got hold of Tom Schofield, he sent a couple of football players out. We did, the older kids did walk a mile, the football players walked a mile with them. The younger kids gave one, two, probably did about a half a mile. And then what they did was between K-one and two, I gave them a couple of books to go and the football players sat and read to them. It was really neat. And then the three, four, five, it was kind of a question and answer type of thing about athletics and extracurricular activities and, you know, it just so happened, one of them was a shrepper who's involved in the FFA and student council and all this stuff. So it was, it was kind of an eye-opener for three, four and five, to see what, you know, what opportunities are there once they get out of Spring Valley. So another wonderful positive experience. We also had the Red Robins come out and visit us out of surprise. We all got out of class, did a couple laps with them. And right now, I've been beating down Jeff Dewey's door to try and get the drum line out there. I know our teachers would hate it, but when it's nice and quiet, send that drum line out there. For no reason other than right now, we've got five students involved in band right now, one's teetering about playing, that's another story, but you know, it would just be a wonderful promotion and I just think it would be really exciting. I don't know if you've ever seen the drum line, but it is really neat. Right now, currently, we are working on our district initiatives with PBIS. To be honest with you, Spring Valley is a little bit behind, however, we are working on it. Right now, we're collecting data on symbol things, bus behavior, playground behavior, lunchroom behavior, things like that. Granted, we've been in school for, I'm a kindergarten teacher, fifty-seven days and it is getting, it's getting better, you know? So, right now, as I said, you know, we do have some veteran teachers right now that do have that, you know, bias about rewarding kids for doing something that is appropriate. And right now, they're, they're bending because, you know what, it's cut in half. I consider myself a younger teacher, but you know what, we're bending. So we are moving forward right now. One thing that we're trying to do is trying to stay away from the extrinsic motivators like the school stores, we're selling trinkets and pencils and things like that because needless to say, we don't have a budget for it. Last week, we did our first group activity and what it was for an hour and hour and a half and on Friday afternoon, we did board games, card games, activities in the gym, we, Xbox, and they used their Red Robin rewards to participate in things like that. Surprisingly, I knew that a lot of kids would enjoy it, I didn't think that every student in Spring Valley would have as much fun as they did. And then in the meantime, trying to gather everybody back into the gym to have popcorn and a, and a drink. I walked back into the gym, find the world's largest duck-up booth game going on with a hundred and eight students sitting around the gym, put on my title, teacher, thank goodness, we all got through without any fatalities or anything like that. And let's see, we are also working on the district's elementary with the daily five-week cafe and things like that. I know that every teacher is doing it, however, I don't know to what extent and how they're implementing it. But right now, things are going okay. I just need to get through the classrooms to see, you know, what they're saying, what the teachers say they are doing, that they are actually doing it. We have got, our PTO is, there's not many people that show up to meetings, however, they do have a, an extensive budget. We're one of the few schools, elementary schools that do script, and that's pretty much their, their income. I went, thought I was going to have to beg for money for technology. I started to model through it and also they said, Jeff, we know you need it, how much do you want? So right now, we've got, we've got a box of twenty-five Pro books coming with a cart, which is very needed out at Spring Valley. We do have a, we've got a very nice computer lab, however, you can't send six to seven kindergartners down there with themselves. And out at Spring Valley, we've got classroom teachers, and that's primarily it. We do have grandmothers and things like that, but we don't have, our Title One is part-time between Spring Valley, all... between Spring Valley, All Saints, and Peace Lutheran, so we don't have those extra bodies. Right now, we are also working on our Smart Time. It's a new concept out there where, right now, primarily, it's being done in the classrooms. What I'm going to start to encourage starting next month is getting across the hallways, room to room. You know, we just got all of our reading data together. We do have students who are behind it. They are below grade, grade level. And right now, looking through, you know, what kindergarten, we have, we have three reading groups. I could probably have four. First grade's got four. Going through the whole, the whole scheme of things, everybody's got three or four reading groups. And you know what? It's difficult to get through that as a classroom teacher by yourself. And I went, and I talked with Dr. Childs yesterday about being creative and seeing if we could do a, you know, where if a fifth grader who is reading at a third-grade level right now, which we currently do have, I observed in a fifth-grade classroom last week, and this child is withdrawing. It's above his head. And what we need to do is creatively come up with some way, not single people out, but you know what? The kids that need to go back to try and get some help, but the kids who are ready to go forward to also get that help as well. So what I need to do is I do need to do some research. I know that we, the school district has some, some help outside of the district to come in and help us as well. So that's something that I, I hope that we can do. Because right now, it's, it's like we're doing a disservice for these kids who are low. And again, coming from Spring Valley, you know, I believe it was 2012, there were blue-ridden schools. We're not used to this. You know, we can't pick and choose who comes through our door and sits in our, in our desks and in our chairs. And you know what? As you guys hear, differentiated instruction. You need to reach that child where he or she is at. And right now, it's very difficult. But if we could take all these groups and level them off and, you know what, try and do some help for these kids to get caught up, that's what we want to do. Just to let you know, coming up, our fifth grade has already applied and received a grant from the Minneapolis Science Museum. What they're going to be doing is they'll be going over towards the end of the year, and it's put on by a separate group that works with the Science Museum, but the kids will actually go over and get into the museum after it closes on Friday evening. And what they will do is they will spend the night in the museum, participating in things, and then spending the next day going through things. So it's, it's kind of a, kind of a unique experience for these kids, and, you know what? They're all looking forward to it. And you know what? That's probably about it. So I'm learning what's going on out of Spring Valley. There's certainly some changes that I'm looking for. But we've been at school for seven weeks, eight weeks, and you know what? It's a, it's a great school, very supportive of the parents, but things have changed out there. And everybody needs to kind of take a step back and see those changes and accommodate how we reach these kids.
Jeff, do you, are you finding you've got enough time to get all your principal duties in and teach?
I don't think that really, this is a, I, I, I tell you what, Scott, you know, when people ask me how I'm doing and do I like what I'm doing, my go-to line is I'll say, I don't know how I'm doing, but I love it.
Okay.
I've been away from kids for so long, I didn't realize it. I am, I am extremely fortunate. I'm extremely grateful. And you know what? I just, I'm enjoying what I'm doing. And right now, things that need to be done, Scott, there are times. I had an issue today that was, that I needed to deal with, and I needed to deal with now, and it was difficult. But you know what? I've got the support of those people out there. I think me being in the classroom, I gained a lot of respect from most teachers out there. Very supportive. However, I'm a very stubborn male, and I like to do things myself. You know what? I don't like to delegate. You know, it is my job. As I was just telling, telling Mrs. Hilger here that, you know, if my wife was in town, it wouldn't work. But I enjoy what I'm doing. I love what I'm doing. I knew it was going to be difficult, but right now, things are getting done.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, when you get a chance, turn up that kindergarten teacher, won't you?
We'll see what we can do. I tell you, every time I look for him, he's gone.
Check the mirror in the morning.
I try that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jeff. We'll jump into then, item 6, Board Action.
Well, just one more thing. I will talk to Drumline.
Yes, please. When I was asking, it was during your, during competition time.
Oh, yeah, I will, I will definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good job, Brad.
Thanks.
Way to volunteer. All right, now we'll go to Board Action, Item A, Monitoring Reports. We had a chance to hear them at the Committee of the Whole meeting. Did anybody have any questions on them, observations, whatever?
This is general rule, so you're all aware. The first report really is basically to inform the Board as to the goals that buildings and teachers within the buildings are setting in compliance with the Board's larger goal than is set for the district, that expectation. And as the reports unfold, the progress that the schools are making in pursuit of those goals will begin to inform data so that you have graphic evidence of whatever progress we are or are not making. And it is our expectation that the Board will be critical in its approach to that and hold us accountable for making added progress. And if you don't think we are, you need to tell us. So that's it.
Okay, be looking for a motion, please.
I move the Board accept the first quarterly academic monitoring reports of the 2015-16 school year as in compliance with Board outcome goals.
Okay, the motion from Mr. Mary, second for Mrs. Law. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Good deal. All right, item 6B, Survey Status.
Very quickly, obviously, the closing date is tomorrow. I anticipate that while the closing is tomorrow, that school perceptions will not shut it down entirely right away, just in case there are some stragglers who want to send something in. However, I do know that as of, I think, yesterday, there were 900 responses in hand, and I anticipate we could be close to 1,000. So we could be very well looking at a 10 percent return, which would be statistically significant.
Don, when are we going to be able to see the comments?
You will get those as part of your Committee of the Whole meeting coming up on December 8th, if I can say. The school perceptions will have a complete report, and all the comments will be assessed.
We can't have those comments ahead of time because the last comments from the last survey took a little while to read through.
Yes, they do, I know. I don't know. I'll have to consult with Bill Foster and find out how quickly they can put all that together in a report form. I do know they wanted that full lead time in order to get the report together. So if we can get it done, say even over the weekend, and have it, so you can have it in hand prior to the meeting of the 8th, we'll sort of...
Yeah, it would be great if we could, because I'm sure there's some value in those comments, but it takes time to read.
I have, when the first came out, I think, quite a few of the foster grandmas must gave their friends my number. And I had, I think, one night, six calls from the elderly community. They could not understand the survey. They really had a lot of trouble with it. So I don't know if we're going to get a response from them. I mean, they literally wanted me to tell them how to fill it out. The big question was, when we had all the schools. And that just threw them all together. I could explain, I explained the options to them and everything else, but the elderly's had a hard time with it.
I hope they wrote something in the comments.
I hope so. And that's what I said, I'd write something down.
I don't do it. Keep this school. All righty.
Mr. President, something, I think this is something I'm bringing a motion on because I think we need to take care of this because of timetable. Okay, it involves the eighth graders. I move that we direct administration to plan and implement moving grade eight to the high school for the 2016-17 school year, and that they provide the Board monthly updates on the progress being made. It's because of the timetable to get it done, I feel. It's why I made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
But is that even on there?
It's not on the agenda, but we can still...
I don't, no, we can't. It's not on the agenda. We can't make them...
Yes, we can.
Even if the public is not...
There is, there is a motion on the floor. Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mrs. Law. Now we can discuss it.
Okay, and the reason I'm bringing it up is I think, because of the timetable on this, and like, I think Brian mentioned that, he needs, if we're going to do this with the eighth grade, he needs to know, like, basically, the best would be in December.
Sooner the better.
So sooner the better, if he's implemented. And I think consensus on the Board, I think everyone, that's something, I feel that everyone is pretty much, is that something, no matter what happens, the rest of the facilities with the elementaries and stuff is another issue, but this part here, I think, is pretty much everybody thinks moving the eighth grade to the high school is pretty much, it's like, we might as well give them time to do it, you know, for scheduling and stuff.
I thought when Tom was here, he said by the first of the year, he would want to know this.
Yeah, I, I, to be clear, I think Tom and I have talked about this. I've talked to Dr. Childs. Could we do it? Yes. Would it necessarily be our recommendation? I don't know that that's the case. We would need to know by the first of the year. So what I'm saying, December, I'm indicating end of December. For example, at the middle school, we are in the process at this time of developing our course booklet. In talking with my guidance secretary, who handles a lot of my scheduling, our plan is to hand out registration sheets early January. Our process is much more simplistic than the high school process, where the students have many more options. I'm guessing Tom's timeline is very similar to my timeline. We're starting the planning process for, for scheduling now. We'll definitely be full-boarded and scheduled in January.
And the big part is, I think in December, we're going to be bombarded with the facilities and that discussion in December, and I don't see this, where this is an issue, where if we could get this to go ahead, it gives them plenty of notice, you know, for them to implement it, you know, so it's, and I don't think, I think everyone pretty much, this is something I don't think anyone's really disagreed with, that we're going to move the eighth grade to the high school, correct?
Well, can somebody...
Go ahead.
One at a time.
Can someone please tell me why we're allowed to vote on this when it was not noticed?
I don't think we are.
I don't understand why we're...
We can bring it up here, but we cannot...
We can bring it up, we can bring it up.
We cannot make an action on it this meeting.
Yes, we can.
Tell me why.
I don't agree with that. It's not posted.
I don't, it's not posted. It's not on the agenda. People were not notified of this.
Remember, it's a right to make a motion, and if it's seconded, and if it's a two-thirds vote, it can be approved.
I disagree. I don't think legally, if the public was not made, if they were not notified that this was going to be an item, then I don't think that we're allowed to make, to make this.
I kind of agree with that.
That's correct. That's correct.
So I...
I mean, I'm in support of the general idea.
Guys, just a second. Don, please.
However, I would say that, you know, there is nothing that prevents the Board from expressing its intention to move the eighth grade to the high school. Whether that's going to be in the fall of 2016 or not, I would suggest to you that the educational advantage of making that move is the idea of the transitional academy for eighth and ninth grade. None of our eighth or ninth grade teachers have been through any training or any processes that would lead them to successfully implement the academy in the fall of 2016. And it would be prudent, I would suggest, to say, yes, we are directing you, regardless of the outcome of the referendum, to move the eighth grade to the high school, but let's give the eighth and ninth grade teachers a year's time to prepare the academy so that when the kids make the move over there, it is academically beneficial and successful. That's my early caveat. I, you know, no problem with moving them.
I don't want to do anything wrong.
I'm, I'm a little afraid if I make...
Go ahead.
That we're dis限ing it to the eighth grade with this motion. If we move the eighth grade, you know, then we have to move the fifth grade to, to the middle school or, you know, you don't, you have a large unused building. And that's not what we want.
Well, Scott, I mean, you could move the eighth grade to the high school and say you're going to take a year to remodel at the middle school. But I think, I think it's all part of a big plan. If it's not part of a big plan, we're not saving any money to move to the high school. We're not really doing anything if it's not part of a big plan, as Don alluded to. And my other concern is, I don't think we should be going ahead before we get the results back from the survey. And I don't, I don't know that the survey is going to say anything, but I just think it's disrespectful to say, we'll have your results next week, but we're making decisions now.
But the survey really didn't entail that eighth grade much on there. That was more of a...
It had a comment section, and I think people will comment on it.
I just think it's... So we need to start taking some action on some of this stuff, because it's, like I said, when the facilities discussion comes up next month, there's going to be, and I don't see what, I just don't see what the, because the high school enrollments is way down. And like he said, they made the comments that it would be very, that it'd be minimal for the transition for the eighth grade. If you move the seventh and eighth grade, that's a different issue. But just moving the eighth grade, they said it wasn't a real big transition would be involved.
Logistically, that's correct. It wouldn't be a big deal. It's what the educational benefit is going to be. If, in fact, we're going to be reorganizing grades, and it appears that that'll happen to some degree, then there needs to be some kind of educational benefit that accrues to it and not just the convenience of, okay, we've got space over here, let's...
Well, it's also the efficiency. When you talk about the economics and efficiency, we have the most efficient building right here.
Yep.
And it's, what is there, 700 and some kids in this building?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sorry, and for the efficiency of the district, for saving money, it's just practical and makes the most sense, because we're talking, also, we want to be efficient. We want to give better education, but we also have to save. We have to save money because of the budget.
To speak to that end, I mean, Tim, I actually support the, the thought about, you know, perhaps sooner than later moving the eighth grade to the high school. To save money, it means closing down a certain number of elementary schools. And part of that, you know, depending on how many we close down, it also means moving up fifth grade to the middle school, and also potentially means moving up fourth grade to the middle school if we don't get a referendum passed. I mean, those are terrible, you know, those are not great options in a sense, but also things that we might be pushed to do. I agree with having a broader plan that includes that with the eighth grade. Perhaps we can do that at the December meeting. I mean, you know, come out with a comprehensive motion that really sets forward what we will do in, you know...
Just puts it at the end of December. Yes, I understand.
But it, but it sounds like from an administrative standpoint that that's okay. And that was my understanding as well, was that the end of December was okay from that standpoint. I agree with you. If we're going to make moves and things, it's time for us to make decisions and move forward.
Getting the most time they can, because it's...
But maybe it means the extra meeting in December, which I don't savor. I think we already have one scheduled. Will that be enough or adequate?
We're asking for a special meeting.
Right. So do we need another special meeting? I don't know. I mean, hopefully, we have another time.
The problem, the problem I have with that in December is we're going to be so bombarded with the facility, because if we want, if we want to go with the rest of the referendum and stuff, there's going to be a lot of, and I just didn't think this was that, you know, removing that, you know, stuff. Like I said, this is something, no matter what happens with the referendum, efficiency and stuff, and like you talk about overall, you're worried about moving into the middle school. What about the high school here? Like I said, it's underutilized.
Why would we move people into the high school?
Because it's the most efficient building.[1780.33] Because it's the most efficient building, it would make it more economical for.
Why would it make it more economical?
Because the school is built for more kids, and it's more efficient, cost-effective.
We'd have to close down schools to make it more economical. And so I don't think we've all decided which schools we're closing down. I mean, I think that's really the tough thing that we'll have to decide.
I think, I think the fact is that you approve the timeline that would look at an overall plan in December that would include a decision as to whether to go to referendum. And I think you need to give yourselves some time to shape that plan. Certainly, we'll be coming forward with recommendations in that regard. It's not our decision to make, it's your decision to make, but while I agree that it's convenient to take advantage of the high school space while it's available, I just want to say, let's give the staff time to prepare for that particular move, and not just do it because the space is here. That's the concern. I really feel that we have an opportunity to do something that's relatively unique, and has been proven in other school districts to reduce failure rates for ninth graders going into tenth grade, and I think that's, that's an important thing for us to pursue.
Mr. President, question for, the survey results are going to be, are they going to be available somewhat for the Committee of the Whole Discussion?
Yes, the intent of the Committee of the Whole Meeting is to have the full report from school perceptions at that meeting.
Maybe it would be prudent for us to move this table, this, and move this discussion to that meeting? And then we would be in line to take action out at the December meeting?
At the Cowal Meeting?
Well, I'd say for discussion, because we'd be in position to act on a day in the regular board meeting in December.
But then if you wait until, the problem, if you wait till the regular board meeting, push it until the end of the month of Christmas, then you're right at the deadline. So like at that, at that committee meeting, could we put it on as an action item on that night? On the committee's hall? Then I'll, if you do that, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion tonight if we can do that, put a lot of the Cowal Meeting and put on the action item on that night?
Yeah.
You guys.
Tim, I totally support action and moving forward, thanks to you, you know, so I'm with you on that.
Are we going to have, are we going to have all these plans later at the Cowal Meeting for us?
Do we give the administration time to?
I think one thing to consider is, I don't know what the advantage of moving eighth grade is if it's not part of a larger plan.
It needs to be part of a larger plan.
A larger plan that also lays out for us and gives Jake and his staff time to prepare the middle school. You know, the idea of moving them a year ahead is that we would allow Jake's staff time to prepare the middle school for the fifth graders moving in. And if, if we're not set on a timeline to do that, I don't know that there's a benefit for moving eighth graders up. It certainly would make my life easier in terms of scheduling, if you guess that we're going to move eighth graders up. And then I'd only have two grades to schedule, but if it's part of a larger plan, I think it does make sense. If the plan's not in place yet, it, it probably isn't beneficial to us in any realistic way.
No, and it's because, basically, it's because we, whether we like it or not, we got to start doing some action on some of this, and I understand it. So I'm, I'm fine with that. If we can, if we move it as an action item to the Cowal Meeting, or if we don't, then I'll, if we can do that, then I'll withdraw the motion tonight.
The motion will be tabled, and will be brought to the Committee of the Whole Meeting on.
Is there a difference between tabling a motion and withdrawing a motion?
Yes, there is. If you're, if you're.
I'll table a motion, then the motion would be, I'll find out, Cowal, correct?
Well, you can table it to that date.
I'll table it to that date, okay?
Okay, that's 12:08. All right. Very good. Then we will do that. Now we will get back to the agenda. We're still on the service, though. No, survey status, we've already discussed, FabLab update. And it looks like.
We have invited 19 partners from the community to join us at a meeting at NTC on November 9th, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. On December 9th, like you said, well, you know.
We're still there.
Yeah, wish them thinking. December 9th, 1 o'clock in the afternoon at NTC. Board members did receive the email with the invitation, so you should have it in your business email. You can check it. You're more than welcome to attend with these proposed partners. Our grant writer, I expect, will be there, and Don Sidlofsky will be there to make the presentation to the partners. Andy was gracious enough to bring Angie Shriver to the office today, and she's very interested in, in working with us and collaborating on it. And so I think that what I can say is, it's moving forward, and it seems to be moving forward well. What little feedback I've gotten from potential partners at this point is that they're very enthusiastic about it, so.
Awesome. Very good. Okay. Item 6B, Budget Calendar.
Yes. Tim wanted the board to have a chance to take a look at this, and we do it. We're proposing at the December board meeting that Scott Growa will make the financial presentation, so that the board understands what our projected circumstances are, and our current circumstances, as you will recall, he did this last year as well. And that evening is a propitious evening to have him do it, simply because it is the evening in which you will put your stamp of approval on some kind of a plan for facilities, whatever that may be, and move forward as to whether or not you will be seeking referendum, and it will be to resolution in January. So every year, we typically start the budget discussions in late November, early December, staff-wise, and Tim will be asking the board in January at your business meeting to establish preliminary budget parameters. We are going to ask for one, I do want to give a heads up here, we're going to ask to move the January 26th meeting to January 25th. The reason being that if you, in fact, are going to go to the referendum, the deadline for the resolutions has to be January 26th. And we were advised by Corals and Brady, the legal firm that handles these things, that clerks may not accept the petition, the resolution, pardon me, adopted on the 27th, which obviously, if you met on the 26th, it would be in the evening, and you'd have to send them next, next day, and they may believe, well, we're not going to do it because the deadline was yesterday. So if we do it on the 25th, we deliver it on the 26th within the deadline, and you could always go back to the 26th if you decided on December 22nd that you didn't want to go to referendum. But other than that, then you know there's continuing conversations and monthly presentations on the budget, beginning January, and then monthly thereafter. We'll be asked for a preliminary approval of a budget in June. And by that time, hopefully, things are relatively clear. We're fortunate, this is the second year of the biennium, so we don't have to wait for the legislature to act on anything, and so likely, we'll have a better sense of what the preliminary budget is going to look like before your approval. I don't know if there are questions or comments that board members have with regard to calendars, Tim has laid it out here, but I think it's reasonable. And pretty much follows sort of the dumb fast.
Anybody questions? Okay, then we will. Move forward on that. Then we will go to Item E, Donations, and it looks like we have.
A bunch.
A several.
Substantial.
Yes, you have. Looks like we are looking at five different donations in a total of $36,581.95, so that is very, very good. I'll be looking for a motion.
I move the board accept with its gratitude the following donations, and direct the administration to make appropriate acknowledgements with the board's thanks. Wisconsin Melt Marketing Board, $100. Elizabeth Fay, $3,000. Anago Gridiron Club, $981.95. Community Health Foundation, $7,500. And Andy L. and Leon Sheldon, $25,000.
Motion from Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Fuller, to accept the nomination, or the donation, excuse me, as stated. Any questions?
Yes, what's the AQC grant? Aquatics, I'm sorry. I should have.
Is Andy L. and Leon Sheldon a foundation, or is that just personal?
I don't know. And Tim, Don, do you know?
I believe it's a foundation.
It's a charitable trust.
Charitable trust?
It came from a charitable trust.
They've been doing it since they were in the 1900s.
Oh, okay.
And from 15 to 16.
Is that Sheldon Incorporated, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Don.
I keep forgetting, Jeff, that used to be part of what you did. So, very good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Bobby. Oh.
Well, is this, I'm just curious about how this is, the donations are district-wide donations? The money that's going to everywhere in the district?
No, they didn't come in for specific purposes.
There's a specific listing on our sheet, they didn't take them off.
Okay. And then I would also just like to acknowledge that the choir department also received a, I don't remember how big, but it was a large amount of money from Anago Carr, C-A-R-R. And so I don't know if that was acknowledged, but that was.
Wasn't acknowledged, because it never came before us, should have been.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, all donations should come to the board.
Somebody's.
I would, I would, I would say, to that effect, if you would please advise your choral director to make sure that they bring that to the attention of administration, it would be greatly appreciated. We will not slap the hand that feeds us, but we will look at it somewhat in the spirit.
The big issue is that with the board acknowledgement, it has tax benefits to the donor.
Right. That being said, we will now go to roll call vote.
Chad Tinsley?
Yes.
Jeanine Long?
Yes.
Patrick McHannan?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Giselle?
Yes.
Andy Barry?
Yes.
And Mike Holden?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Then we will go to Item 7, Personnel, New Hires. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve hiring of the following individuals. Lori Farman, hard-time special ed education aide. Kathy Hackbart, food service. Christina Grant, regular education instructional aide. Darlene Johnson, school nurse. Molly Gumps and Cindy Connor, school secretaries.
Second. Motion from Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Jensen, to approve the hiring of the individuals listed in the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Jeanine Long?
Yes.
Patrick McHannan?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Giselle?
Yes.
Andy Barry?
Yes.
Rachel Zehnoff?
Yes.
And Mike Holden?
Yes. Okay, we would be, at this point, be looking for a motion to go into closed session to, for discussion of possible items regarding deconsolidation. Second. Okay, motion from Mr. Mary, second.
Can we take a break before we?
Let's go first.
Sorry, I have one.
Motion for Mr. Jensen, second from Mr. Mary, to go into closed session. Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Patrick McHannan?
No. I need to go to bed. Can we see? Can you hear me? Yes, I'm sorry, I did.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Holden?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Jeanine Long?
Yes. We are now in closed session. We will take five minutes to allow the room to clear of all nonessential personnel. You may take your five minutes.